Just sent in a letter now, just now it's all that she's been here.
I didn't talk to me, so.
I was curious, because the preliminary agenda came out, said that she was, she had sent a letter. And we got the letter here.
Say her name.
Sierra. Sierra Beddelen?
Sierra.
Sierra Beddelen? 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 Beddelyo?
Come on.
That's good enough. Give it a French twist. That'll be, oh, yeah. Seven up and down, yeah, go ahead.
Called order the City of Columbiana City Council meeting on this October fifth, twenty twenty one. I would like to ask that Deanne do the invocation, and then we stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Lord, bless those who hold office in the government of our city. Help them to do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice, and help them to use their authority to serve our citizens faithfully. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deanne, you call the roll?
Becker?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
McBane?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Patilio?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
All of you received a copy of the minutes of the September twenty first, twenty twenty one City Council meeting. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, they'll stand approved as submitted. I am not. I just have a question on clarification on the reading of the communication.
Yeah.
Do I read the one which is submitted, or will that come, she'll come herself?
Yeah, so she, she is gonna make it tonight, so we're gonna put her.
Okay.
Put her on as persons wishing to appear.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'm not aware of any reports of boards and commissions to be discussed or reviewed. And so we have that item on the agenda, recognition of persons desiring to appear. I may put that for a later period of time.
She's on Zoom.
She's up there. Oh, she's on Zoom.
Yeah, 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 she's.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sierra, are you?
Hi.
Hello. Sierra, we will like to, we would like to recognize you right now to make some comments.
Yep.
Okay. You're muted.
Lost your sound.
You're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I am Sierra Codill, and I own the Cherokee Child in Town. I'm a women's and children's boutique, for those who may not know. And what I wanted to present this evening was, I'm doing an Oktoberfest themed sale on Saturday, October twenty third, from twelve to five at my boutique. And I have a friend coming in town who owns Enticing Cupcake Truck. She's a very big business out of the Akron area. She has came to town before, and her event did awesome. And she's doing an entire fall festival cupcake theme menu for us. And she's parking in the gravel lot Garden of Eden. And also, we have a small blooms business who's coming to set up and sell blooms by the cupcake truck as well. And. And then we're being co-hosted by Birdfish Brewery. And what he's doing for everyone who makes a purchase at the store that day, they can get a ticket valid for an Oktoberfest limited edition mug from Birdfish. They can go up to Birdfish, and they'll get the mug for free with their first purchase of a beer. What we had talked about was having the Dora. So that way, if customers did buy something and went up and grabbed a beer, they could walk around and check out some of the other shops that Columbiana has to offer. That's what I wanted to present and ask for your permission.
Okay, are there any questions for Sierra?
Have you tried to twist any other merchants' arms to participate in this?
I had tried to call a couple other places in town and reached out via social media, but nobody did answer. Josh from Birdfish did recommend I try ours pizza, because they also sell beer. And they're next to me, so maybe a customer might wanna go in there and eat instead of walking up the street. So hopefully, they're willing to participate. And honestly, the more the merrier, I would love other people too in town. But the hope was, at least people will walk around and check out the other shops. This is my son, sorry, he's joining. Hi, Mom, good to you.
My, where my other car?
Here, I'll get it just a second, okay?
My back car.
Um, but yes, I would be happy to get others to join in.
My back car.
I think it's a great opportunity for, if everybody would get involved.
I agree, and I was hoping some people would be more responsive.
Hi.
Um, but I haven't given up trying, sorry, I'm at home alone with the little ones.
Hi.
Okay.
Bye. My other car.
Your cars are right there, okay?
My back car.
Sorry, guys, I'm doing the best I can with the kids.
So I think, just wanna reiterate that she does not want to close the road. But it would be a Dora event, for a special event, and then we would put up the signs for that. Those are the only, you know, two main things that that we would be thinking about during something like that. Is the road closed, and are we putting the Dora signs up? And the answer is yes. The answer to the Dora signs is yes, we're gonna have them. The road will not be closed, the road will not be closed.
Correct, no closing of the road. I know my customers actually don't like when that happens, because then they feel they have nowhere to park.
Chief appreciates that as well.
Yeah, my customers complain, so I did not wanna close the road. I think it also, sometimes it can be good for our businesses if they're having like the street fairs, but sometimes it also hurts them, so I don't wanna do that to anybody.
If you could reach out to us, maybe tomorrow or the next day via email, just remind me. We'll go over trash and restroom service.
Okay, perfect.
I'll make a motion that we accept this as a Dora event.
I'll second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion?
Should we waive the fee for the food truck, or not?
Well, since they're at the Garden of Eden, I didn't think they were required, since it's private property, correct?
Yes, I got permission from the owners, the Rance family, to use the Garden of Eden. And I also filled out with the city today the permit for the food truck as well, and paid the fee.
Oh.
Okay, okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay.
Okay, any other good questions? Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor, I'd like to call the roll, Deanne?
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Patilio?
Yes.
Banner? Yes.
Sierra, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's an official event now.
Thank you, and I will hopefully get more people involved. But I was hoping that this would drive business to everybody.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, do you need me for anything else?
No, no.
No.
Okay, my son's going crazy, wild, so I don't wanna interrupt anything else. Thank you guys very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Bye.
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 Ah, technology, it's a wonderful thing. Okay, I'd like now to turn to the manager's report, Lance?
Thank you, Mayor. So as another, another reminder, the Community Action Agency still can help on those utility bills for those that have been impacted by COVID. There, out at the park, there's been major progress on the girls softball stadium. The field is looking, coming right along. And then the R and Bs project, if you looked at the Iditaros Gathering Place, or you can see that being constructed, and it's looking beautiful, so it's quite a project. Just giving you an update on West Salem Street Stormwater Project. We did issue a new route since the last meeting, access update on our website, and we'll continue to do that. The closures and signage will continue to move throughout the project. Pearl Street intersection is open, though the gas company does need to come back, and they still need the lower line. So we will be in that intersection again. Again, we've been posting the updates, and we're, we turned up middle today. And we really, really, really hope that we'll be off Salem Street in a couple of days. So that's, that's the main, main thing. And we hope to be out of the school's way tomorrow, but we'll see how that goes. The Entrepreneur Class toured Humtown's Letonia site as far, part of the Progress Committees project that we were working with. And we actually had an opportunity to involve two other classes on this next project, so that's pretty exciting. We met with History of Columbiana class, and also the Art Class. So they're going to try to come up with some ideas, and that should develop over the next few months. We did receive another CRA application, we'll be looking at that this week. We still have been working closely with the Cultural Collective on the Save the Theater, and hope that's, you know, moving right along, I think it is. Greenford Church did reach out, looking for another community project. We ended up pushing it back to the spring, and we are open to new ideas, but we were thinking about an area in the park. Larry Weber and the staff are diligently working on Joy Christmas, taking advantage of this nice weather. We do, Diane Breed Diesel's was last weekend, and we got the Beer Fest coming up on October ninth. Let's see, we did meet with, on the County Line Road Sewer Project, we've been working with that, so Mark and the engineer, we've all been working through that, and as developments come up, we will, we will let you know, we may need some more council action on that. Tonight, Mike Harold's here, Finance Director. He found a better way to refinance those bonds that we were considering refinancing in the spring. And all of that is on the agenda tonight as an emergency. And also, at the same time, is appropriation of funds to get through that, and Mike's here to answer any questions. Street Department, we did take down hanging baskets, thank you to the Chamber once again for donating those. We did a lot of patching and some paving over the last couple of weeks. We've been monitoring the stormwater project. And we've also been monitoring the one-way alley idea. We've been just taking, if we get calls, we log those in. You know, it is a temporary thing that we're doing right now. We will take those comments and, you know, give them to the engineer, along with the traffic council and such. And, you know, come back to you with a final, final review on that. We did get three people that reached out so far, and we'll see how that develops. Water Department, EPA did come, and they're gonna be giving us some recommendations to do, and we'll, we'll recommendations are coming in, trickling in, and we'll, no pun intended, I guess, but we'll, we are addressing those one at a time. The Water Department spent a lot of time on West Salem Street, we were preparing lowering some more lines, we've done that, and replacing any lead lines that we find. Waste Water Department, they've helped out several departments using the Vector, Vector Truck to dig. And EPA sent us a new draft discharge report permit, excuse me, and that's every five years. And we're going through that process for the wastewater treatment. Park and Cemetery, Cemetery, lots of mowing, finishing that up, and then Joy Christmas. And Park's looking, looking really nice. Electric Department, they did hang a couple banners the last couple of weeks. And we're still continuing working on the fiber project, and settings at the substations. Mayor, I think that is it.
Just, just one comment, Lance, I noticed that the Park Department were lining the park, lining the parking lots and some of the other traffic ways today.
Yeah.
And it really looks great.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Yeah, the, we're excited to get those, get them in, doing some crossings that we couldn't do ourselves, too. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? So Salem Street, couple, three days.
Yeah, yeah.
Thereabouts.
Yeah, we'll open it up at the one end, and it may be a one lane at the other end, but it will be opened up soon. Yep. And then we're moving to Middle Street.
Then you go to Middle Street.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, very good, and any other questions? For Lance, okay, if not, you received a copy of the bill list of ten, five, October fifth, twenty twenty one. Are there any questions or comments on the bill list? Hearing none, we have no old business on the agenda tonight. I'm gonna move to new business, and first, I'd like to entertain a motion to read all ordinances by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Can we call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Patilio?
Yes.
Banner? Yes. Becker?
Yes.
Okay. First item A on the agenda, probably the most important for the people in Columbiana, is I see here that there's a motion to set trick or treat for Sunday, October thirty first, twenty twenty one, from five to seven PM in the city.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, quickly? That's good. Any questions?
Been a lot of questions about this over Facebook, so let's just get it settled.
Okay, any other comments on the motion? Deanne, we call the roll?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Patilio?
Yes.
Banner? Yes. Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. I'm now, would like to ask if we could have a motion to consider the items B and D, the two ordinance there, as an emergency. B and C, excuse me, B and C.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion on the motion? Deanne, we call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Patilio?
Yes.
Banner? Yes. Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Okay. We have our fiscal officer here, we all understand that this is a refinancing.
Yeah, they called refunding, refunding the bonds, we're actually refunding two series bonds. The biggest one being on the sewer plant, that was for a forty-year bond, that we have paid sixteen years on so far. So we sold off twenty-four years ago.
Point of, point of order, we still need to have a reading of the ordinance and a motion to have it, and then second, before we start discussion.
Okay, so, and we'll have to do, we have two motions, so we just pass the first one, or get a motion second, then have discussion about the second item.
Yeah, do the same thing for the second item.
For the second, okay, so I've been counseled and corrected. So first, we're gonna ask on ordinance number twenty-one dash O dash three zero nine one, emergency. An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and enter into a cooperative agreement between the City of Columbiana and the Ohio Water Development Authority for the refinancing of the wastewater treatment plant bonds, the proceeds of which were used for the purpose of construction of a new wastewater treatment plant, and declaring an emergency. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion. We have a second. Okay, now we can have discussion, Mike, wanna give us any other information there specifically on that motion?
Basically, that's, that's the, if you got that summary sheet, I believe, in your packet. Overall, it's gonna save us about three point one million dollars in interest charges over the life of the loan. And the one for the sewer plant, obviously, we have twenty-four more years to go. That's where we're saving the biggest amount of money, obviously. The other bonds, we actually refunded these a couple of years ago, and we're just redoing them again. And actually, we'll be done with these bonds in December of twenty twenty-five. So they have, they have only a few years left, but it's still over two million dollars that, you know, we owe. You can see where it says estimated new issue date, a one point nine million on those bonds. Plus, that doesn't include the interest, that's just the principal amount, so it's, it's over two million dollars. So refunding that is saving us a little bit of money also. But overall, it's a, you know, it's a pretty good deal, the interest rates are down pretty low at this time. Somewhat even close to under two percent. And we don't know the exact amount, the rate we're gonna get yet, until OWDA approves the application. The application's already been sent in to them, it's just they need the ordinances approved through council to, you know, to do the paperwork. So once they get those, that's why we're doing them as an emergency. Once they get those, then they'll, their board will decide on the rate as to what they'll give us for that loan.
Mike, point of clarification, point of clarification. If you refinance your house thirty years, you've paid twenty years, you refinance it again, it goes up, back up to thirty years. These bonds don't change like that, that's gonna stay a forty-year bond with sixteen already paid on it, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, the time to pay, the length of the term will not change.
Right.
And just to give you, the bonds on the sewer plant, the two thousand five USDA loan, we were paying four point one two five percent interest. So we're getting that, we're cutting that in more than half to refinance, refund. So overall, you know, over the length of the loan, it's gonna save the city quite a bit of money.
Yeah. Any other questions on the motion?
Good work, Mike.
Thank you.
Can you call the roll, Deanne?
Patilio?
Yes.
Banner? Yes. Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number twenty-one dash O dash three zero nine two, this is an emergency. An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and enter into a cooperative agreement between the City of Columbiana and the Ohio Water Development Authority for the refinancing of the fourteen-seven sewer project bonds, the proceeds of which were used for the purpose of improving and constructing sanitary sewers, forest mains, and one lift station, and declaring an emergency.
So moved.
Second. Motion, a second. Any comments on that?
Just, it's the same thing that I pretty much said, it's just that these bonds were actually used. We, these bonds were, were the, for the funding of the sewer lines that went out to Firestone Farms. When they did the development of Firestone Farms, is when they put these sewer lines in.
Any questions, any other questions? Call the roll, yeah?
Banner? Yes. Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Patilio?
Yes.
She carries. Ordinance number twenty-one dash O dash three zero nine three, first reading. An ordinance amending appropriation ordinance twenty dash O dash three oh six nine by adding five hundred, four thousand, six hundred, twenty-five dollars in the WWTP surplus fund, and three hundred seventy-two thousand, three hundred fifty-one dollars in the WWTP reserve fund, all for the payment of current expenses as they may arise.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions or comments on that motion?
Good guy, I have one.
Okay.
First of all, that should have been ordinance twenty-one dash O, because that twenty would have been last year's budget. So twenty-one is this year's budget. What that is, is we have, and if you, yeah, if you look at the recap sheet that I gave you, that's one, if you got it in color, it's highlighted in yellow. We actually have two funds out there that's just been sitting there, they're reserves. One was set up as surplus money, and the other one was set up as a payment for the last loan payment of those bonds. So that money can be used to pay down, so basically, we're paying down eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars on those bonds before they're being refinanced. So that, that's the reason we needed to appropriate it. We never appropriate the money when we do the budget, because we weren't gonna ever spend it. So that's why we're appropriating the money now, so we will have to use that money to pay down those bonds.
Thanks, Mike, any other questions? Okay, so that clarification is that it's ordinance twenty-one dash O dash three oh six nine, correct, Mike?
Correct.
Okay, that's corrected, as stated.
Just.
Three oh nine two, three oh six nine. Yeah, how come we're number?
So ordinance D, right, is twenty-one dash O dash three zero nine three. And ordinance amending appropriation ordinance twenty-one dash O dash three zero six nine. So you want that twenty to be a twenty-one.
Correct.
Correct.
That was, that was our appropriation ordinance that was passed back in March.
Okay.
So that should be twenty-one, it's just a typo.
There you go.
And just to clarify, this is a first reading, this is just not necessary as an emergency, like the other?
And just to clarify, this is a first reading, is this not necessary as an emergency, like the other two? Okay.
No, it's first reading, because by the time OWDA gets the paperwork, and they go through their process, I figured we'd have time
Okay.
to do two readings before I'd have to actually probably send them the money.
So we're not gonna have to get a phone call to show up here on Saturday?
Money right up. The ones we're paying off are with USDA, so USDA might say, hey, give me my money, you know, OWDA, so you got all these accretions.
And we do not work on Saturdays or Sundays.
Let's be honest, we don't really work any day.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the motion? Deanne, you call the roll?
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Patilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
That motion carries. Is there any comments from the public, anyone at this point would like to make a statement or comment to council? Hearing none, we'll turn to council comments.
You just might wanna remember that Saturday is also Safety Day at Fire Station Number One over here. It's really, really an encourageable thing to get the young ones out there and indoctrinate them as to thinking about fire safety.
Thanks, Dan, from what time to what time, Dan?
I think, I believe it's, you know, I don't, I don't wanna say for sure, I don't wanna miss, you know, misquote it.
I'll send it over to Daniel.
Could comment, anything else?
Did you hear anything on our, our student representative?
No. We did send an email out today, but no.
Comments? I can entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.